Attention, salute. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which is Spain. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's pause for a second. Thank you. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time for public comment prior to the action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure meetings reasonable. In length, if you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
I have a motion, Mr. Grove.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ublin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's ordered. Report from the school board liaison.
Alright, so winter sports are starting up again with basketball and wrestling. They just had their tryouts, so that will be going on again. Thursday, this past Thursday, we just had Career Day, so we were able to hear from different speakers and what their jobs were like, so that was a good time. And this past Friday, anatomy and physiology class had a field trip to the National Museum of Health and Medicine. And I was able to go on that because I'm in that class. And that was really fun, it was really cool. It was in Maryland and there were things like the bullet that shot Abraham Lincoln. So it was a really fun trip. Ms. Waddell does it every year. So it was nice that anatomy trip was to go over here. Yesterday, we had our Veterans Day ceremony. We got to hear from speakers for about an hour. Today, there's a JMU field trip that students were able to go on. And tomorrow, I will be going to Williamsburg because I was awarded the Virginia School Boards Association Exhibers Scholarship. So thank you guys for that. And I'm honored to serve as the school board representative. I won't be doing it for much longer, so I really appreciate the months that we've had together. Code Drive will be starting, I think tomorrow. Friday, the eighth grade will have a fundraiser, a knocker ball and spaghetti dinner with an art auction. And senior class just had a fundraiser, the third and the fourth for art tour. We raised somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000. Our trip was moved from Florida to Boston, so now we will be going to Massachusetts.
Wow.
Tomorrow, the ASVAP will be given and there's also a STEM field trip to Lord Fairfax. We'll be learning from different speakers about science, technology, engineering, and math. So I will be going to that, that should be fun. Saturday is Quiz Bowl Tournament at Roanoke. Sunday and Monday, there's Latin Division in Richmond, which I go to every year. So this will be my fourth year and final year. And it is a lot of fun. Wednesday, the 21st through the 23rd, we'll be having no school because of Thanksgiving. Thursday, the 29th, there will be a VCU and University of Richmond field trip. Friday, the 30th, there will be a senior fundraiser, a movie night at the elementary school from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 5th through the 7th of December, SOLOs will be starting or be given. On Saturday, the 8th of December, all district band auditions will be taking place. And I want to talk about my personal project that I've been working on with the glucose. Valley Health was able to give us the glucose. We have 32 so far, so I've packaged those in envelopes and we'll be placing them in every classroom. And then my church has extra bibles, so I will be providing the Fellowship of Christian Athletes Club, which I am in, bibles. So we'll have bibles. Alright, that's what I have for you guys today.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Stacy, what's the movie for movie night?
I don't know, actually.
Okay.
And before you leave, so you're getting this BSBA recognition, but that's on Wednesday?
No, it's on.
Is it on Thursday when we're there, or is it on Wednesday?
I'll be there tomorrow.
You'll be there on Wednesday?
Yeah, I think there's like a frame of time. There's like, it's a few days, but I'll be there tomorrow.
Oh.
Have a safe trip.
You'll be there.
You'll be, you'll be there. We don't show up until Thursdays, so we're gonna miss you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the second year in a row that Rappahannock County had a student selected.
It's probably worth a spot in the paper somewhere.
We can still do that. We're getting pictures tomorrow.
I think that would probably be a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Alright, Ms. Rogers donations, I saw quite a stack there.
We do, we have a lot. Roy's Orchard and Fruit Market donated one bushel of apples for the Halloween Festival. Before and After donated five pounds of coffee for the Rapp art tour. Skyward Cafe donated watermelon jelly for a raffle basket for the Halloween Festival. Lee's Orchard donated four gallons of apple cider for the Halloween Festival. Ms. Kay donated classroom materials, new and used math and phonics games for students at the elementary school. Gwen Burley donated $215 for cheer gear t-shirts. North Fork Shenandoah River donated $125 to bus supplies for the Halloween Festival. And any remainder of funds are gonna go towards the senior trip. Headwaters donated $1,637 for the educational enrichment grant, one school, one book. So thank you for that. Ponmark donated a cheer banner for the class of 2019. The PTO donated $1,636.75 for the one school, one book. The Settle Company donated $100 to bus supplies for the Halloween Festival. Pearson Contracting donated $200 to buy supplies for the Halloween Festival. Remaining funds go towards the senior trip. And Ann McLean donated Halloween costumes for the children.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from October 19th meeting?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second is by, is there any comments? Thanks for doing that. It's a lot of work. All in favor of adoption of minutes, let me know, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, Mr. Grove, did you have a chance to review?
Yes, yes I did. I have two questions. One is, the payment for CCLC, it's under maintenance service equipment? Why is it, is there a reason for that, or is it just that's a convenient place?
It was where the treasurer instructed us that it should be put into.
The county treasurer put it there?
Well, Stacy and the treasurer talked about the best place to put it, it was a convenient place for those services. That's where we put it.
Maintenance services equipment?
What line?
It's the biggest one on there.
I guess services, I guess it's under services.
Under equipment.
Contracted services.
Contracted services.
I guess, I'm just curious.
Contracted services.
I'm curious, I was wondering, hopefully.
Yeah.
And when do we do the RFPs for fuel and those kind of things?
Robyn's actually working on quite a few of those right now for re-contracting services. So she's doing, there's a cycle, so she's got the cycle.
We're in a three-year cycle for the fuel, I know, right?
So I know cleaning supplies are up and some Xerox stuff, and there's a cycle for all of that, so yeah.
Just so we don't miss it. You know, it went about seven years without RFP for some of those things.
We don't do that anymore.
Okay. Don't want to miss that.
No search screen, good call.
Okay. Then we're good?
Good, thank you for doing that. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move.
Motion from Ms. Biden, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you so much. Well, we, looks like we have a lot on there, which we do, but a lot of good things. And the first piece of news is that we have a new peer tutoring program. It kind of stemmed out of the extended library hours that we started. And then Lauren Petty, as part of her NHS project, decided, hey, we could expand this to include some more opportunities. So without further ado, Lauren, NHS member, if you want to come up and talk about your project and also Ms. Petty, our NHS sponsor, can also share some of the other projects going on at the high school.
Great.
So come on up, thank you.
So Dr. Grimsley asked me to give you a brief overview of the National Honor Society Program at the high school before having a student speak to you about the new NHS tutoring program. Students are invited to join NHS when certain criteria are met. They need to be in the 10th grade or higher, they need to have at least a cumulative GPA of 3.5, and they need to take at least two advanced studies courses during their junior and senior years. Students also need to demonstrate evidence of leadership, service, and character. Upon becoming a member of NHS, students must maintain the standards by which they were selected. In addition, students must complete 15 community service hours each year, as well as complete an individual service project. Students must accumulate at least four hours helping with the chapter service projects, either projects that they have designed themselves or that another NHS member needs assistance with. So far this year, NHS students have accumulated over 500 volunteer service hours. Our NHS chapter hosted a Red Cross Blood Drive in October and will host another on January the 11th. In addition, members have begun planning their individual service projects. One student did a fundraiser for the Rappahannock Animal Welfare League. Another just helped out at the Community Rapp Trails Family Fun Walk and Ride last weekend. The student who will speak to you next is creating a tutoring program and I hope that by the end of the year, that we'll be able to report on many more service projects completed by NHS members.
Hello, my name's Lauren Petty and I'm a junior at the high school and I'm also a member of NHS. For my NHS project, I have started a tutoring program in which high school students help elementary school students with concepts they are struggling with in school. I created a flyer about the program which was sent to the elementary school and distributed in Tuesday folders. It is on that screen. The purpose of the program is to give elementary school students an opportunity to get help from other students who can provide them with guidance and support. Today, we had our first tutoring session and I'm happy to report that nine elementary school students came to participate in the program. Six tutors were present and I'm expecting more to help in the coming weeks as several additional students who volunteered to be tutors are a part of the drama program and will be joining us. I'm hoping that more elementary school students will take advantage of this program in the future as it is a fantastic experience for everyone involved.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Moore?
What were the grades of the kids who showed up from elementary school?
We actually had a lot. We had fourth graders, a third grader, and a sixth grader and a fifth grader, I believe.
Okay, oh, so they were just...
So how did these permission slips get sent out, Lauren?
I contacted Mr. Schuler and Mr. Temple and they put them in Tuesday folders, which are basically folders that get sent to every elementary school student. So they all had an opportunity to see them.
That's great.
So they show up and you don't know what you're tutoring until they show up?
No, especially because today was our first day. They just came and told us what they needed help with and we...
You had to ramp up quick.
Yes, yes.
I remember third grade math.
Yes.
That makes a difference.
Well, we were very lucky. We have a lot of really talented tutors and a lot of these students, they wanted help with multiple subjects and our tutors really stepped up and I was really proud of all of them.
That's great.
Really cool. What a great idea.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And so we're staffing the library then on Tuesdays and Thursdays now, is that it?
This, um...
On Tuesdays, my mother is in the library.
It works out.
She can be just sponsored.
Well, no, no, I think it's all wonderful.
And she's been voluntold by none. It's wonderful.
That's great.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Who is your mother?
It's a solid one.
Great report.
You're to be commended.
Thank you.
Very exciting, Lauren, thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great idea.
And we did have extended library hours for some time, you remember we were doing that? But Lauren jumped right in and said, you know, I bet we'll have a lot more kids show up if we offer some help with homework and some tutoring. So they put it out there for all subject areas and...
Are they doing it just on Tuesdays now?
Right now, and we'll see usage and feedback and I'm sure...
But we're still open on Thursdays for homework?
It wasn't being used.
Wasn't being used?
Not much. We had one that would show up sometimes, but yeah. So this was an idea to expand it and we're already getting more kids.
So it's not just, it's not two days now, it's still one?
Yes.
Alright, item 4.2 is just a quick update about the World of Work Career Expo. You remember that was held on October 24th and 25th in Winchester? That's a two-day event where we run 3,000 students across seven divisions with 80 businesses and over 40 volunteers, well over 40, through this expo to expose seventh graders to the career clusters. This has been a push from the profile of a graduate mandate for hands-on exploration of the career clusters through elementary school and especially in middle school. So this is one way the career and tech directors a few years ago developed this expo in order to...
This is four or five?
This year would be the third year, third year, I believe. All running together.
Might be four.
It could be, I thought 2015 was our first year.
Whatever.
So it was organized originally by the Lord Fairfax Community College Career Pathways Consortium. That's seven school district career and tech directors in partnership with Barrett Machine, the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission, and Frederick County Economic Development Authority. We are still using Body Renew and Fitness Center in Winchester. However, this venue probably will change next year because of a partnership we now have with Shenandoah University and it might be a nicer setting for it, but this has worked pretty well in the past. And there's a little map up here that you can see. We set up two separate arenas, if you've ever been to this old sportsplex, or Body Renew and Fitness Center. So there's a turf side and then an arena side. So it's all set up in different sections to illustrate the different career clusters. And the idea that we told presenters when we designed this a few years ago was, you know, remember your audience. These are 12-year-olds, 12 and 13-year-olds, then what are they gonna know about careers? So how do you make that interesting? Well, you gotta make it hands-on, you gotta make it fun and interactive. Okay? Definitely hands-on, little bit gross, it's always good that schoolers like to touch things. They had the breathing lungs and the heart, and they even had dissection stations where you could take things... Oh, I can't go near those, but they love it. I don't know what this child is, what's being done to this child here, probably some type of a, you would know, Mr. Grove.
They're doing CPR.
Ah, is that what happened?
They had a whole CPR race thing, which was really...
Yeah.
They did, they had a mannequin one that was kinda neat. So we extend the student learning too, they...
Actually, that machine, we used that machine last, two weeks ago. The machine that you see, the green machine, was it there? It's a, it's a, it's got an initial, but it, it works as a...
Yeah, I saw that at the...
It works as a, a... It does compressions, hard compressions, and it's automatic.
This one?
It just continues to do it until you turn it off.
Yeah.
So you have one? Yeah. We, yeah, every station has one now.
And we used it the other day on the day all the way to Park Hill.
Wow. So they get to see this stuff in action and what you're actually using on the job and that's the idea. And the kids are so interested in, you know, how they, they even had a fire hose out there and how to put out fires and communication stations. They love the sheriff's station where they got in and got to see all the tactical equipment and gear and stuff. They really did, guys, love that. And then we extend the learning, we gave you a copy of the recent book. So our books get a little bit better every year. And in our, the book, it illustrates each of the clusters with more recent market data, labor market data, so it shows you the pathways, what the trajectory looks like through high school and two years post-secondary, and what you would need to get some of these jobs on the other side. So it tells you what, what jobs are available in each cluster, how much you, your potential earning, but then the educational background you need to get there. And that ranges from vocational certifications to community college certifications and all the way through degrees. It kinda gives the whole picture. To a seventh grader, that seems a little overwhelming, but when they had some interest and got to play around with it a little bit, it makes a little more sense. So when they're academic career planning, which is a fluid process throughout high school year, they start it with inspiration and a little bit of hands-on experience. We do some aptitude testing and interest surveys as well, and that goes into that. And so far, the ratings on this expo have been 98% good or great by the students. The kids really, really love it and I've heard great things from the parents as well that, just to keep on doing it, they're bringing home some, some great conversation material as well. Pictures around the years. So that's, that will continue. It's one of the main events that the LFCC Career Consortium puts on. So that's what we continue to do, so we'll keep going as long as it's available. Do you have any questions about that?
Yeah, definitely. When I talked to kids from Rapp when I was there, it was, several people said, this is my favorite field trip I've ever ever done on. So it was really a different one, some were in the finance area, some were in the medical area. And they did, they didn't have to go to everything, which I think was part of their, their free range kind of thing. They chose what they're interested in.
Yep. They go in with that purpose in mind, is go check out things that you might have an interest in or, you know, really pull back that experience because they use it when they get back. So it's not just a field trip to go see. They bring back some, some real experience that they'll use instructionally and also to inform their academic career plan. Okay, 4.3, we've been giving you a little bit of teasers each month about the Children's Savings Accounts Program. And we want to share some more recent information about that. So I have our community volunteer advisor, who is sort of an expert in this area, Ann Yeoman, who will be giving an update to you about some more of this, as well as answer some board questions. So Ann, give the overview.
Yeah, okay. So I think that all of the board members, and there may be a few copies around here of some of the other information, but I think all of the board members have received a number of documents from this group that has been working, hmm, about four months now to try to put together a children's savings account. So my first comment is, I'm going to basically review some of the key concepts, but then I'm going to talk more specifically about what the program here would look like. But the first thing I want to point out is, on the slide, you'll see that graphic that goes along with the profile of graduate. And that's a really important, it's not just because it's a very nice graphic, it's because the whole idea of the children's savings account is really to support the development of the graduates. It isn't just about the money, although we will talk about the money. It's also about the sorts of habits of mind, the ability to make decisions, the ability to plan for the future and so forth, that are really very important parts of these programs. I did want to mention, when I was here for Career Day, I noticed on the hallway over there all these letters of acceptance and all these financial aid awards and all this kind of stuff. It's really, really very impressive. But I also want to point out a statistic that's a little discouraging, which is, and this is for Virginia schools only, okay? But for Rappahannock graduates that are actually accepted into a Virginia school, only 38% actually enrolled last year. Now, there are a lot of reasons for that, and money is one of them probably, but there are also lots of other reasons. Lack of confidence, being a little nervous about going into a different environment, all kinds of things. So the ability to go into post-secondary education successfully or into a career successfully depends on not just technical knowledge, academic knowledge, but also one's basically level of confidence. And there are aspects of the children's savings accounts that we think are, really contribute to that. So, our next slide. So this is the, this is the vision, and I think those of you on the board may have seen this before, is that every Rappahannock County student will graduate with a plan for the future. Again, this tracks the career and college exploration. Financial capacity, which isn't just about having money, but knowing how to use it and make those kinds of decisions. And academic and personal skills in order to actually pursue that plan confidently and successfully. So we often know what we want to do, what we should do, so forth, but do we actually have the confidence to actually go and do it? Have we actually learned those things as we go through school? We have four goals that are much more specific. One of which is, the first of which is every kindergarten student, starting kindergarten, gets a savings account. The second is that the student is actively involved in age-appropriate activities all the way through school to develop financial independence and saving for the future through this children's savings account. The third one is that the student develops their own academic and personal skills for lifelong learning and career success in association with the kinds of activities here. And again, I want to emphasize that many of the activities that we would like to coordinate with would be things that are already embedded in the school curriculum or already required in the school curriculum as part of the mandated college and career preparation. And in fact, some of the things that your school liaison was mentioning at the very beginning of this meeting could also be hooked up with these savings. And then the last one was not one that was on our radar originally, but as we thought about it and looked at the research, one of our goals is that it's not just about the students, it's about the student's family. And the student's family having access to credible and trusted resources to develop their own skills. One of the things that I've seen from work that I do with other organizations that work on these kinds of programs is that very often what happens, particularly as the kids start to get in about fifth, sixth, seventh grade, is they start telling their parents what they need to do. Mom, I need, I need to do this. Dad, I need to do this. No, I'm not gonna go to this thing because I need to save my money for whatever. So there is a little bit of a circular effect. But there are also things that we could specifically do to encourage the parents to be, develop their own financial skills. So I'm just gonna very quickly go over some of the key concepts that we all know, we're all, we're talking the same language here. So basically, the underlying definition of a children's savings account are that it is an account established for children, usually all the children in a particular cohort or at a particular age, usually at birth, sometimes in kindergarten. Our idea is that we would start with kindergarten here in Rappahannock. Those accounts are started with an initial C deposit, a specific amount that's put in. Usually, it's the same amount for every child. And then there are subsequent incentive deposits throughout the course of the program that support whatever the project goes. So if you think back to what those four goals were, the incentives would somehow be linked to that. And a very important piece is this, is that there is active engagement by the children and their caregivers, whether it's parents or others, in, in this whole process all the way through. Again, as the children get older, the ways in which they can interact become different. If you Google children's savings accounts, you will find lots of children's savings accounts. But many of these are basically just bank accounts that parents set up and their custodians and so forth. That's not what this is. This is a very active kind of engagement where what the children do primarily, what the students do primarily is what will actually trigger the additional deposits into their accounts. In addition, there's also the actual match, match factor. So it's, it's an active process, okay? The primary terms that you really need to follow is the C deposit, that is, that initial amount that gets put in. Usually, again, it's a fixed amount. The incentive deposits that are usually tied to some kind of activities could be attendance, could be participating in campus visits, like we heard about this morning. It could be meeting a personal learning goal. The student has agreed with the teacher, I'm going to increase my reading score by whatever it is for that student. And if they achieve it, then they might get an incentive in their account. Again, the older the student gets, the more they can participate in setting these goals and therefore driving the rewards themselves and therefore reinforcing their own decision-making and their own abilities. Really, a key idea is what we call opt-out and universal. That is, every child in the given cohort gets the account, or at least the basic account. The reasoning behind this is, if you don't do it that way, then you will have a fairly large segment of families who will not participate. As you know, if you have to do something, you probably, well, not probably, you're less likely to actually do it, okay? It also means it's, in our experience, that lower-income households, in households that are not engaged in the banking system, who for other reasons are not, they're sort of a little bit off the radar, tend not to participate in these kinds of things. So that's the way... So that's the way to serve these children. And one of the subsets here would be your foster children. So the foster kids would, with this kind of a model, actually get accounts as well, okay? Then the opposite is opt-in. That is, the parents would have to open some kind of account or, you know, do something. Okay, next slide. The program administrator or the fiduciary usually is a, well, I shouldn't say usually. There are several possibilities. It can be a local jurisdiction, state of the city. It can be a nonprofit five oh one. It can be a community foundation, usually it's some sort of combination with the various responsibilities allocated, but with one of these organizations as the primary fiduciary. So for example, in some programs, the community foundation is the fiduciary. They provide a lot of block office support. But a nonprofit is actually doing the day-to-day management, all of, all the accounts and that sort of thing. So there, there are many variations on this. One thing that is often a little bit confusing is that there's a financial institution that actually holds the accounts, but that financial institution has no authority over what, what happens in those accounts. The fiduciary and/or their contracted day-to-day administrative group would actually decide when the deposits go in, how they go out, would be responsible for communicating the statements and so forth. So a couple of times, we run into people that think that banks would be in control. No, they're, they're just the bookkeepers, okay? So there are really two primary options that you need to choose from. One is interest-bearing custodial accounts, that are really, again, a private financial institution of some kind. Or a college five-two-nine investment account. And I'm assuming that you all are familiar with college five-two-nine investment accounts? Okay, because sometimes I make that assumption and people say, "What?" But in the general environment, there are in fact, at great many people who are not familiar with college five-two-nine accounts. And in fact, only about somewhere, a little over eleven percent of even middle-income households actually participate in five-two-nines. So let's go into the pluses and minuses of these. And I want to get this out there right now, because it is a question that often comes up. There are certain advantages to five-two-nine accounts. They have, they have very good accounts in terms of returns on investments. Virginia's five-two-nine happens to be one of the best ones in the country. It is consistently highly rated. But, and there are tax benefits for doing the five-two-nine accounts. But there are also some negatives. And I've highlighted in green the things that from our point of view are the, are the more negative dimensions of this. One thing, the first thing is that if you use the five-two-nine, you can only use it for post-secondary educational expenses. And part of our vision for Rappahannock CSA is that you would have some of this funding or the savings that the children have, that the students have when they graduate, we could also use it to help students launch a career if they choose not to go directly into post-secondary education. This is not something we've been seeing in accounts around the country, but it is something that seems to be very useful. I looked at the, what students self-reported their plans were going to be after graduation, going back to the last four years, thank Shannon for providing the programs. And I think last year it was something like seventeen or nineteen percent of the graduates, I'm sorry, nineteen, twenty, eighteen graduates were going to go right to work. They were not going to go to post-secondary. Now, some, some of those might later go back to school, but we'd like to think about a way to help those students get a jumpstart as well. So that would rule out five-two-nines. The other problem is that the way the five-two-nines work is you have to already be banked or you have to have a way to make the deposit by check or from your employer or transfer from some account. For many families, this is not a reality. They don't have bank accounts. They don't operate that way. And the last thing really is that they're not really, they don't really involve the active engagement in the same way. The account gets set up, somebody, parents, whoever, is putting money in, but the child is not actually engaged with that account. So for us, there are a lot of reasons not to do five-two-nines. So let's talk about the pros and cons of having a private investment account. I mean, a private account. And the primary ones are that there really is no deterrent for any family, whatever their economic status, to participate. If it's going to be a custodial account that runs through the program, then everyone can have access to it without the family having to get into the complications of managing the account. Now, we would like, as part of this process, for families to eventually come into the mainstream system. But the reality is that there are many families that are not, and many of them that won't. And we think their children should have this opportunity as well. They, sorry. Oh, all right. If you're using a, a banking institution, particularly a local one, and we have had discussions within several local banking institutions, that also means that that kind of visibility, that visibility, that engagement in the community is really an important factor. So you could take the kids to Union Bank if Union Bank ends up holding the accounts and actually have them put the money in the bank, if they, if that's a possibility. It also makes, ensures that if you are using these private accounts, that the savings are not withdrawn for purposes, are not aligned with the purposes of the program. So a five-two-nine, the money could be drawn, you pay a penalty, but you could be withdrawn for something else. And the last thing is, the account really belongs to the child. Okay, so those are some of our pros and cons. We're going in the direction of doing a private account, or at least that's our thinking. I should emphasize all along the way here, that we have been having discussions with lots of people in the community, and we really welcome, really welcome getting input from any sector of the community. We've had surveys. Shannon put out some information over at the school's social media network. We got a lot of responses there. We also have been having meetings with a lot of different people in the community. And so I really do encourage anyone to follow up with me or Shannon or anybody else who wants to, to talk about this. So usually these, I realize I'm taking a lot of time, some of these projects usually have multiple sources. Individual donors, foundations, the financial institutions footmine in, in addition, holding the accounts, civic groups, public sources, sometimes even the state five-two-nine vendor as a part of their requirements of having their contract. And endowments or investment savings is kind of where the, the fundings come from. So one program jumped out there with, with, they started with a million and a half dollars in an endowment, which is a, a good place to be, if you can be there. The weirdest example of a public source I know is parking fines in St. Louis. So in the city of St. Louis, they fund their, their children's savings account through the parking fines. Runs through the treasure loft. Okay, next slide.
We, we couldn't start one that way.
Yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be a good option for us. Maybe we could think of an equivalent. I don't know what that would be. Um, so I just wanted to, I'm sorry. So I want to come back to that, that vision again, that I do the plan, the capacity and the skills, and remind you of the, of the, the goals. And because now I want to talk about the way we're really thinking about right now, what this will look like. So what we would want to do, what we are proposing at this point, or will propose in a, is that it be universal, that every child in the cohort, starting in kindergarten, gets an account. It has nothing to do with their socioeconomic status or anything like that. They get an account. We would start in the public schools. If we have the resources, we'd like to fold in other children as, as well, but that's down the road. It, that is, if it's universal, it would be opt-out. However, parents could choose to take their child out, close the account and so forth. And, and this would be accomplished, this opening of the account and enrollment in, in the account, as well as the information opting out. We would think could be included as part of the ongoing school registration process. So for example, when kids register for kindergarten, that would be one of the many things that people would, would deal with when they, when they come in, when they actually do their registration. It would be a custodial account in an FDIC-insured institution. That is, the program fiduciary would own the account. There would be a sub-account for each child. And the way this information would flow in general terms is, children have school IDs. There would be an ID for the program, right? And then on the other side is the bank account information, so that we'd be able to send information on the account back the other way. It also means that we would be able to receive from the schools information on the child's activities that would trigger accounts. And I realize that one of the issues there is confidentiality and all that. So those, those agreements would all have to be worked out very carefully. But this, there are models for doing this and ways that you're not exposing personally identifiable information and so forth, so we are aware of the privacy questions. Let's see. The students, the children would, would get quarterly statements, which would show their deposits, the seed, the incentive deposit, plus any interest to the student. I mentioned getting, okay, we covered those points. Our thinking, we're thinking big here, although the research shows that the actual amount of money doesn't have to be big. Some programs go as high as a thousand, some do only twenty-five dollars. We're, we're proposing doing a hundred dollars as the initial seed deposit. That is, when that kindergarten account is open, it's open with a hundred dollars. Then the incentives would be up to a hundred dollars that same first year. So in that first year, a potential for two hundred dollars. And then after that, every year, until the child graduates, a hundred dollars annually that could be earned. And the, the concept of earning is important. It does have to be tied, or our thinking is it should be tied to things that the children actually do, what the students actually do. As the children get older, what those things are going to change. But again, we very much want to align it with what's already happening in the schools so that, you know, we're reinforcing that connection between the ongoing future planning that's already called for in your career and college preparation, but ties it back to the child actually doing something. So the maximum plus seed and investment at the end of this model that a, one child could get by the time they graduate would be fourteen hundred dollars. Is that enough money to pay for a semester of school? No. But as, what the research tells us is it's not about the money. The money's always good. That's that much less that you'd have to borrow perhaps. And we know anecdotally, just this past year, and this is just anecdotally, that the gap funding for kids, even those kids who had scholarships, was anywhere from two hundred dollars to nine thousand dollars for students here in Rappahannock, even if they had a lot of financial support. But what the real effect is on the child's understanding that they may go to school or they have plans and they can execute those plans. So that children, the, what the research shows is that students who have some savings that they're on, even if it's only five hundred dollars, are three times more likely to actually enroll in post-secondary and four times more likely to complete. We would allow deposits by third parties as well. That is, parents of friends or families or the four H prize or whatever it might be could, could go into the account as well. And again, I want to emphasize that these are all proposals based on experience from a lot of places, but also primarily from talking to folks in, around the county about what do they perceive. The incentive triggers, this is something that we need to, we really need to spend a lot more time with the teachers, and I think that'll happen soon, so that they can tell us what's going to work best from their perspective. That will not create a new burden for the teachers. We very much don't, don't want to create more work. So we would like for them to tell us what would be most efficient for them and, at the same time, something that is very meaningful for the child. Because in the, in the end, it all has to be something that's meaningful for the child, the student. So these are just some examples of things that could trigger the additional incentives, but there could be many others. For example, the student's honor society project. Maybe that would be the sort of thing that would trigger an incentive. So this is something that has to be worked out, and we really, again, need, need more input on that. How is it paid out? What happens to the money? After graduation, for post-secondary expenses, so, you know, it could be tuition, fees, books, whatever, cost of attendance. But it also, again, this would be very different in Rappahannock for some kind of employment-related expenses. We also envision being able to use this money to support dual enrollment, where there are not other funds for that, or other career post-secondary expenses, post-graduation. Tip, the money would be paid out to a third party. For example, for, in the case of employment, we might pay for uniforms, tools, licenses, occupational licenses, those kinds of things. And again, this needs to be defined more specifically, but we need some good thinking on those kids who are not going to go directly to school, how to give them a jumpstart. If funds are not used, we get this question a lot, what if the kid disappears, moves out of the county? You know, what happens to the money? And again, it's, again, it's, it will be up to us to decide. But what many programs do is they'll hold the funds up until a certain age. And if they're not used, they may either decide to just give them to the child, which I think is where our, our direction, we're moving in now, because it belongs to the child. Or sometimes the match money would go back into the program. But I think we would prefer, if we've been saying all along that it's the child's account and the child is earning this money by doing particular kinds of things, then I think we would want to go in the direction of giving it to them at some point. So the sources of funding, individual donors, financial institutions, foundations, civic groups, whatever. And we do have some donors who've already committed to us to, you know, when we're ready to receive the money, we will, they'll be, they'll be there for us. Can't tell you a fixed figure yet, but it's there. But I do want to just point out a little bit the ways in which the money would be used. Not going to go into a big figure in a minute. One is the actual savings deposits themselves, the seed money and the incentives. The other is the operational costs, which will be someone to manage this, because it'll be a fairly large and complicated project over time. But also the technology. I think it's really important, if we're doing something like this, that we are able to collect information on what, what the kids are doing, and not only what they're doing in, in the particular program and the savings, but what else are they doing? And so that we can begin to build a picture of what's effective over time. And this is not something that's, takes, is simple technology. Well, it's not all that expensive, but it is a big piece of the operating, by the way. But we need to know what we're doing, because inevitably, we would need to make changes. We would need to know what the results are going to be. And it'll be ten or twelve years before we know whether the child actually goes to school. So we have to have some interim benchmarks, some other kinds of measures as we go along the way. And this, again, is something that we need to figure out with the teachers in particular, with people in the community, what makes sense. You know, what, what are the things that we should measure to see whether this is actually having the effect that we want it to have? And then lastly, the sustaining fund or an endowment to generate revenues on an ongoing basis. I would, I only know three programs in the country that actually have sustaining fund or an endowment. Many programs, even the largest and the ones that have most publicity, jumped out there and every year, they're sweating it out for money. And I, I personally would not recommend doing this unless we had money in the bank to cover the accounts when we open them and also have enough sustaining funds to be, to be generating the revenues that we're going to need to build over time. So that's my personal recommendation. So this is just some idea of what the startup costs would be under one model. There's a couple of models out there. We're really ambitious. We'd like to start with K through three, the four grades in, in year one. And then every year, add the new kindergarten class, but also add the next two upper grades. So K through three, new kindergarten, plus five and six, new kindergarten in year three, and grade seven and eight. If you did that, by the end of year three, you would have six hundred kids, roughly, in, who have savings accounts. That would be less than total, seed, incentives, operations, so forth. Something under three, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, but it's also six hundred kids. So, next one? Oh, I love it. She made it pretty for me. If we really wanted to be ambitious and we want to include all the students and keep going in years four and five, and add another three grades every year, and we used a figure of sixty per class, which some classes are bigger, some are smaller, and add in non-Rappahannock County students, you basically would multiply the initial two hundred dollars per child per year for your immediate cost, and then you would be projecting out, so. Timeline, we would like, if we can get everything put together, open the accounts starting next year, and then add the accounts annually. And as I said, we should not open accounts unless we've got the money in the bank before the account is open. You're making a promise to a child, this thing is going to be there for them. They do their part. They do their part, the account's going to be there, so, not quite. But it would be nine years to the first payout, okay, if you start from, from the third grade. Next steps. We're going to keep talking with the community for another month or so. We want to draw on the teachers' recommendations, we need to finalize who's going to be the fiduciary and/or local host, if that's applicable. We need to select the financial institution or maybe more than one, investment versus accounts. We need to make the final decision on those key features, what are going to be the triggers, what are going to be the policies about withdrawals, dropouts, whatever. The funding plan needs to be implemented, it's been developed, but we need to implement it and actually get those checks. Obviously, lots of policies and procedures and lots of legal agreements. So to be sure that we are FERPA compliant, but also what would be the relationship between all these different partners. Now, you may have noticed as I was going through this, who do not see, when we were talking about who's involved in this?
Us.
You did not see the schools, right? And the reason you didn't...
I kept looking for that slide.
And the reason you didn't is that the schools are absolutely critical for this happening, that's where the kids are. And that's where the learning is going to be happening and those activities, and that's what will be happening. But, in our own mind is, and I don't know of any part of it is, the school is not responsible for administering and managing this project. Really critical in terms of accessing the students, communicating with the families, all of that. But all of this, there is a lot of management and stuff that goes on with this. So that, again, is the kind of thing that would be have to be worked out in detail in agreements. But it's, it's not the school's responsibility to make this happen. Can't happen without them, but they don't have, the schools don't have to do it in terms of somebody who's, you know, I don't know, a superintendent for children's savings accounts. Okay, so, I think we certainly can have lots of questions. I know this is fairly complicated in a lot of ways. And I know some of you have had some exposure to this before. So we can ask questions, follow up now, later, whatever you would like, there are many issues.
Yes ma'am.
Just to be clear, it's all private funding, yes?
And your, your name is Ann?
Ann Yeoman, like in the Navy?
Yeoman, okay. So, Ann, this website, is that something that you?
No, this is actually an organization that, for more than twenty years, has worked with a, it's a national organization that works a number of strategies that have to do with building of financial capability, financial mobility for households. And they have funding from one of the national foundations to maintain a directory of children's savings account programs. So the information that you have on that comparison document that I supplied ten days ago or so, the easiest way to go back and follow up on that or verify that is actually to go to this and you'll find links to all these different programs. So that's just, it's just an easy place for people to go. There are other sources, there are lots of research, published research on this that I can provide if you have around specific topics.
And so, rather than pummel you with a lot of details and questions,
That's okay.
My thought was,
Pummel me.
If we have, yeah, well, it could take a long time. So, my thought is there's a lot of what-if, what-if, what-if kind of things. It'd probably be best just to know, how is it that we could funnel questions or, you know, what-if scenarios your direction if you're gathering information, right? We just need a way of making sure we can get that information for those questions.
I think there's two ways. My guess is that some of your questions are in the FAQ document that you already have. But other, if they're not, and even if they are, and you, you still, you know, want a different perspective on it, if you could let Shannon know, this is, and she can funnel the questions to me or some other member of the team. We don't have a domain yet, we're, we're working on that, which would make it a whole lot easier for people to communicate with us. So, yes?
Great, thanks.
Any questions?
Anything, anything broad that would be?
My, my broad question is knowing that the five-two-nine is a really good, like way better than a plain bank account kind of,
In terms of return on investment?
Investment, in terms of return, I, I really would think it would be key for the schools to educate families who have college-bound or college material kids that, that this is not a substitute for a real college savings account.
No, I think, I think you're right, and I think that's a good example of, two things. One is this, the fourth goal about increasing the family's knowledge and the family's ability to make decisions, financially beneficial decisions and so forth. So for example, and when school opens or actually I had the stuff at the,
Yeah, you did.
The conference night the other day, the other couple, few weeks ago, this, do you have a five-two-nine? Do you have a savings account? Here's some information, you know, whatever. But to have specific, it's part of the whole college prep thing. The thing is that it's not happening when, as far as I know. A lot of parents of really young kids are not hearing about this, or if they're hearing about it, they're not thinking about it. You know, it's not, it's not front of mind, there's so many other things going on. So it would make sense for that to be part of that family activities, just like getting people to use free tax return preparation or understanding the issues around credit or those other kinds of things that have a big impact.
You said, you said like there's, the stats are, there's about eleven percent of families that are taking advantage of five-two-nine?
That's of, that's of the upper five percent of households.
Uh, sorry, Ann.
Yeah, and for the lower income households, it's point three percent. And again, the, I'm sorry.
They don't have the money.
They don't have the money, but it's also, it's partly the cash, and, but it's also the mechanism, having to have the bank account. Or have it be a direct deposit from your employer or a transfer from some other existing fund that is not a place where many low-income households, or some others too, but many low house, that's not where they are, they don't do banking, you know?
No, and here's where it's breaking my heart quite often. The mandate for profile of a grad is forcing us to look at all these great career clusters and planning out your future. And they start that in eighth grade and then they really start getting serious about a sophomore, junior year, and guess what? Do you have a five-two-nine? What's that? Well, we may want to rethink that academic career pla, it's awful to see that light go out in some of these children who haven't been thinking that way or the families haven't been planning that way. And you heard the stats, they're not. So having, that was a huge piece of this for me, is that family outreach, financial planning, we can do, starting in kindergarten. Everything seems so much more possible and the five-two-nines can be brought up and, and tying families in and FAFSA. What is a FAFSA? This is so important to figure out, you know? So all these pieces that are coming, that parents aren't necessarily thinking about that early, and, and they're not. We're finding out more and more as we're getting into the academic career planning process, that it's just much too late to be talking to them in their sophomore and junior year.
I think if we had a family that, a family, you know, if they've got the wherewithal to do the five-two-nine, you know, both structurally and in terms of the cash, we would encourage them to go do it, right?
Absolutely. I mean, that's weird.
But, but again, the reality is, yes, by all means, do this. But the reality is that a lot of, there are a significant number of households, ten percent of children in this county live in poverty. So, there are a lot of, and they may be banked, but they don't have a lot of cash.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Okay.
It was very educational.
Welcome questions.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, speaking of educational, we had a rescheduled staff professional development day that happened on November second. So Mrs. Carol Johnson, our assistant superintendent, is going to give you an overview of that day. She was instrumental in the planning of all of that, that hurricane canceled the first time that we had to reschedule because it was required, so, Mrs. Johnson.
Okay, so, thank you for the opportunity to give you an overview of the professional development plan for Rappahannock County Public Schools for this school year. I call this making time for professional development and that is always a challenge. We need to have time to plan for the professional development. Very often, the planning for these activities will start six months to nine months before the actual day of the event. And then, of course, finding time for the staff to be able to participate in those activities. So obviously, we all know that professional development is essential. It's one of the ways that we have to better our teachers' performance, most importantly, to raise our students' achievement. So, and, and also considering why professional development is essential, there is increased concern regarding liability issues each and every year that we are in the profession of education. The professional development also acknowledges our teachers as professionals. This is a career and this is ongoing training to help our staff to be able to refine those skills. It also reflects the priorities of the school division for any given school year. It gives our staff time to reflect on their practice. And then it also offers those opportunities for team building. And that's essential for a school division that wants to have high morale and workplace satisfaction. So why do we schedule professional development during the school year? Well, research does show that learning during the school year does make it easier for educators to apply what they are learning immediately in the classroom, so that students can benefit right away from the activities. The planning times that our teachers have on a daily basis are already filled with team meetings and also with student meetings. If there's not a team meeting or a student meeting, beating, then those teachers do need that time for their own personal planning. After school is another time when we try to do professional development. Our after-schools, times are already pretty much booked up with building leadership team meetings, team leader meetings. We have several book clubs that are going on amongst staff right now, as well as the faculty meetings. I was talking with some of our administrators this evening and they were talking about how they were trying to help teachers to find time through their school day for department team meetings, because very often, teachers in the high school won't share planning time. So trying to find time through the school day for those people to get together is at the top of our principals' agendas, more or less competing with the division-level professional development needs. So, again, finding time is a huge hurdle. So the PD plan for this current school year, if you'll recall, last year when we presented the calendar, we did have additional days built in for professional development. The team, the calendar team agreed that we wanted to stress the importance of professional development for our staff. Very often in the past, if we have lost a professional development day due to weather, we have just lost the day. We've not made up the day. And the calendar team felt that that sends a message to the staff that professional development is not as important as some of our other activities and we wanted to change that. We also have added a teacher-leader position this year. Mrs. Karen Sandborn has been working with me on professional development activities, so that we're not only covering the required training, but addressing the needs of our staff as well as their interest. We also consult with our principals to ensure that the building levels are met, building level needs are met. Right now, we have performance-based assessments that the principals are working on. They have their own curriculum issues, updates that they are working on. So we're trying to support them with those as well as incorporate those into the division-level professional development days whenever we can. So moving on to the plan for September seventeenth, the day that never was, that had many months of planning ahead of that date. I, I was extremely excited, I had a phone call, one of the items for training on there, you'll see a VKRP testing, which is a Virginia kindergarten readiness profile test. I was contacted by them through the summer to schedule this new required training that was coming down the pipe. And I was so excited that I had a date offered them, September the seventeenth. And it was like the gods had smiled upon me and said, yes, you can do this. So for September the seventeenth, we had the required hands-on CPR training, which is required for our teachers' relicensure. Our teachers have been very anxious about this new requirement. We have eighteen to twenty teachers per school year who need to get this required training in order to renew their license and they count on us to provide this for them. So we had that in place. We had Title III updates planned for that day, which was a very big legal requirement for us. Our Title III population this year has doubled, if not more than doubled, from last school year. We needed to be sure that our staff know what they need to do in order to serve these students appropriately. There have been school divisions around us, Louisa County is one, Gushland County is another, that were basically taken over by the state because they did not comply with Title III guidelines. So it was imperative that we got this information out to our staff this year. This year, we began using Google Docs email and Google Docs as a technology strategy to share information. Several of us were challenged with that new program and were having difficulty performing our duties. So having training on that was also essential. The VKRP testing I mentioned. Each year, we do MANTP training for staff. That is a restraint strategy that our teachers use with students. It is more about de-escalating students who are in a volatile state. But we are required to either train new staff or recertify staff in that each year. So that was planned for September the seventeenth. We had restorative justice practices planned for that day with the Piedmont Dispute Resolution Center coming to present. This ties in very much with our new emphasis on attendance this year because restorative justice practices give us alternatives to zero tolerance suspension policies, so that we can keep our students in school. And then, lastly, we had a substitute training scheduled for that day in which we were going to present to our substitutes about the Alice and the lockdown program. So, September the seventeenth was canceled due to the hurricane. So there was an attempt to try to reschedule things. We, we looked at doing the CPR training and doing the restorative justice training and trying to work that into a school day and do it with substitute coverage. We've had difficulty finding enough substitutes this year, so we not only had, didn't, did not have the manpower to arrange it during the, the regularly scheduled school days. It was going to cost upwards to twenty-eight hundred dollars to pay the substitutes to come in and do it that way. We were able to work our MANTP training and our substitute training in during other regularly scheduled school days, so that was a plus. However, additional training needs came up in the interim. Title IX was one of those. And a lot of times, Title IX is a good thing to do at the beginning of the school year when your staff first comes in. However, sometimes the training that is available doesn't come out until after the school year is underway. So I had a pile of information that came across that we really needed to get out to the staff to be sure that they were complying. I think one of the things that drove that home to me there was a court case, Russell County, Doe versus Russell County School Board, and I won't bore you with the details of the whole case. But the, the school was found to be negligent by having a failure to train their staff. The court concluded that the school defendant's failure to train teachers and employees on how to spot, investigate, and address sexual assault amounted to deliberate indifference. And we most certainly did not want to be caught on deliberate indifference. We also had some FERPA issues that came up that we felt like needed to be addressed with the staff immediately in regards to student privacy information, along with policy updates. There was a update to our harassment policy that dealt with abusive workplace environments that we needed to get out to staff too. So, you guys came through and gave us November the second. And we were able to do it, so thank you so much. So what's next? After all that, what could there possibly be left? So, on January the fourth, we are going to have a Virginia retirement system representative come by. That's something that our staff has asked for an update on, so we'll do that during a workday. We have another PD day scheduled for February the eighteenth. We already have scheduled mental health first aid through the Fall Cure Mental Health Association. That will be a required training for new staff who have not had it. Um, we will continue with restorative justice practices. The um, Piedmont Dispute Resolution Center actually asked for a LIHS grant to include Rappahanna County so that we could get um, upwards of three thousand dollars worth of training through the grant for restorative justice practices. So fingers crossed on that. Um, we are introducing a stream project that's like the STEM technology initiatives with reading and art added into it. So um, we want to do some training on that February the eighteenth. Then continuing, we have request four, and I have a whole list of things that the staff would like to see happen that day. Team building, repeat of CPR, other staff choices, um, national counseling group to present to how to talk to our students about not using drugs, personal wellness, um, a presentation from Conservation Wet and Wild, more MANT training, a next level of mindfulness training. So there's lots out there. So thinking about the future, um, we are looking at the option of online PD programs. Um, online PD programs can't cover everything, but there are so many interests that are out there. This is a good way to be able to address pockets of interest with our staff. So we're gonna be looking at those. And we've had requests that teachers be allowed to visit other schools on PD days. So that's something we can look into. We are going to revisit the calendar and go back to dedicating a day at the start of the school year for some of these required trainings so that we know that we've got those out of the way when the weather's fairly stable. And then there's always summer training. Um, that's not always the most popular based on people's summer schedules. Um, however, it is something that we can offer. So in appreciation, thank you for November the second for allowing it to be used as a makeup day. Um, we did have positive feedback from our staff and our presenters on the training. And it allowed us not only to address our needs, but to honor our own school board policy by providing that high-quality PD each school year.
It's our goal to have how many PD per year, four?
We had two full PD days scheduled. Um, the, we had partial PD scheduled on early release days. Um, and then the beginning of the school year is set aside for professional development activities. However, a lot of those happen within the school buildings.
Is it preferable to have a full day more or a half day more?
Full day is always better.
You get a lot more done with a full day. Then you do two half days.
Plus you're probably not exhausted when you start.
And we, we have been doing more of a menu option so that we have concurrent sessions happening, sort of like breakout sessions when you go to your convention. So we like to shake it up a little bit. Alright, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Alright, so let's talk about this big grant we're working on. Pull this up. Very excited to have this completed.
Excited to have it done.
Yes. My, my husband said that. He's like, I thought you were done with all this. So did I. So the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation Grant um, just came at sort of a perfect timing for us because of the crisis that we had with the loss of Head Start funding. Few years prior, we lost our VPI funding and continuously we see these funds being pulled away. And I believe you all brought up, and so did the Board of Supervisors, we're concerned that we shouldn't probably rely on those funding sources. So explore ways that you can, you know, try to come up with a more sustainable model that may not depend on that. And poof, here comes the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation Grant thinking the same thing. Because they've been looking at the allocations for um, particularly the VPI program, Virginia Preschool Initiative, and seeing that there is a lot of unused allocated slots in other districts where they've been reallocating and expanding the program. Um, and here we are without anything. So there's underserved populations and some that are being underutilized. Um, so we'll go through this. Um, but why is this grant project so important? For us, it's perfect timing. Like I said, we don't have those resources that other districts have. Um, we are seeing um, a big increase in our numbers of children in poverty that need those services. Um, and we're also finding that youth, especially before they come to us, they all have to come to public school or some type of schooling. Um, and particularly your kids in poverty end up in your, um, in your public school system. They're scattered when they're younger. And it's very tough to kind of keep tabs on your numbers coming up and where, and placement. DSS is having a hard time finding them unless something really bad happens and they have to intervene. Um, so it's tough. And we're scattered that way here too. Um, and then the latest research, which is pretty exciting to all of us educators who know that, you know, the earlier you intervene, the better. Um, and they are showing now, this is pretty exciting, that the student achievement and other measures of student success, um, there's always that gap in socioeconomic status. So you always see your, your low-income students performing much, much lower than um, their, their median income peers. Um, the latest research is showing that if you invest in early education and take care of that gap earlier, it's much easier. And once they um, get to kindergarten, the growth weight, the growth rate takes over from there. So the growth rate is consistent despite those, what we see in gaps currently. So the idea behind exploring these options is, okay, you, you intervene that early, it's easier, probably much more cost-effective. Um, and then also the growth rate from there will take, take over and you don't have those huge gaps that you're spending. I mean, we spend millions of dollars on that and taking care of some of those gaps in our intervention funding and special needs and all of that. So um, it's a great, um, now they have the research to back it up. So that's what this grant project was looking for is mixed delivery models, public-private partnerships to provide those interventions earlier. So perfect timing for us because we were already having this discussion about what are we gonna do? Um, so that's what it's doing. Um, it's promoting flexibility, out-of-the-box thinking. You know how much we love that around here. Um, and it's pilot programs. So this is their third round of this grant cycle. Um, so they're looking for collaborations between business, education, community leaders. Um, it was included in McCallum seventeen eighteen by annual budget and it is approved for continuous funding in nineteen twenty. So exciting for us. Um, and what will this do for us? The way uh, we wrote this grant was build high-quality early childhood education in childcare settings in the private sector as well because it is different. Everybody has a different um, early childhood educational program at different levels of quality standards. Some of it's not aligned to the Virginia quality standards, which we appreciate because that's what we use for our kindergarten readiness indicators later. Um, we'd like to build high-quality subsidized services, especially for our low-income students. Develop single-entry access point for the First Step Program, which is what we were calling what we're doing now instead of Head Start. Um, and that's important too because we have families that get pretty discouraged at all the paperwork they have to fill out in every which place. So if we had a single entry point that we created collaboratively, they'd do that one time. And then placement would funnel to the most appropriate placement and subsidy level. Um, build a collaborative vision for early childhood education and the roles the community agencies play in developing stable supports for the neediest families. We all needed this vision together because we're all kind of in a silo even though we're all in it for the kids, right? So let's all talk about this. Um, so a huge part of this grant program in the initial stage is to create a community zero-to-five continuum that addresses each of these barriers for school readiness, which we are very concerned with because that's gonna be ours eventually. Um, establish a more inclusive outreach effort to connect families with resources, which is a really, it's a big one. Because we're finding those interventions happening much later than we'd like. Because by the time we're intervening, it's because something major has happened. There's trauma. There's, you know, drug addiction and other things that are, are taking precedent and that's very costly to mitigate and try to keep those families together. Um, who is participating in the grant project? Um, Rappahannock County Schools is named as the fiscal agent. They usually require a public school and a private partnership to do this. Um, project coordination, CCLC, because they came on and it's kind of saved us from the Head Start debacle. Um, there is a leadership team that involves DSS, RCPS and CCLC, particularly just with managing that grant and how it has to be um, managed according to the goals. And then our planning team, which is really the essential team on how this is all going to pan out, um, is the schools, the CCLC project manager, People Incorporated has come on board, Smart Beginnings, the Rapp County uh, private childcare providers are around the table as well. Um, and the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services. So that's our planning team that has to help establish this and they have the access to all the resources and intervention programs too. So the supporting organizations, we have twenty-two that came to the table to say this is important. We're in, and at the very least, we want to be part of the continuum planning uh, process so that we can figure out what we can leverage together, what resources are there, what's available to the community and what's missing. Um, another key piece of this is that um, CCLC was awarded a, a PATH grant to do a needs assessment through Child Focus. And that's a community needs assessment. It's not just for them. It's for all of the childcare providers and for us through this grant too. Um, to be able to really hone in on what are we using, what is underutilized, what resources are out there that we're missing? So we can leverage all those together and funnel it through, um, making sure we have those supports for early childhood. So you can see that's a, a great list there. I'm so excited to see um, that we have our other early childhood care providers around the table and they are very excited to participate with this, with us with this. Um, the grant awards will be made in just a few weeks. So it's a nice quick turnaround.
Things that we don't know if we have.
You don't know if we have. You don't have much yet.
I don't know anything yet.
Or anything.
I know it's done. We apply. That's what I know.
This is our, this is our hopes and dreams.
Yes, they are. That's what we're hoping.
That's pretty solid. More of us are thinking our.
Yes, and I want to get it out there because regardless of whether or not this is funded, the conversations we've started are, will continue. And it's important for the community to do that. So if it's funded, wonderful. That'll get us to the next level. We wouldn't have to worry so much about trying to leverage the Head Start and, and trying to peel back those dollars. You know, it's gonna take a while. Um, so that will alleviate that pressure. Um, so the needs assessment is mentioned here, um, conducted and it'll be complete for February, which would start the planning process for this grant, which will be February through June. Um, and full implementation for First Step Program to begin next fall. So good timing to make sure we, we have that continuous service.
And it's a two-year plan.
It's a two-year plan, correct.
That's great.
Yes.
And we'll know it before we have to plan our FY twenty.
Yes, we will. It's important to know that. So it's perfect timing. It all just kind of came in right. Um, so how do we envision this is going to work? Um, well, we have our planning team. We want to create a professional learning community. So here's ways it's going to benefit regardless of, we're going through the planning process, whether or not it gets funded or, or not. So we brought all these people around the table because we had to anyway, because we're very concerned with how we're going to continue these services. Um, but we want to create a professional learning community for early childhood educators, which we don't have around here. And, and there's not many regionally either. Um, so this is going to bring all the childcare, early childhood providers together to share best practice, participate in workshops, receive professional development that they might not otherwise have seen. We want to incentivize continued education for early childhood education, um, education teachers. There's not the requirements we have to have for teaching in the public schools. Um, and very often there's not much incentive for them to go beyond in their education. So we are finding that as well. So we want to provide a coaching mentorship model and incentivize that higher education. Um, increase childcare providers eligible for DSS subsidy. This is something our childcare providers in the county are very interested in because they're, they're not all eligible vendors for DSS subsidy. You have to require, you have to hit a certain level of Virginia quality. And we want to help everyone get there because the more people that can serve kids, the better. Of course, we are going to work very hard toward returning Head Start and establishing early Head Start programs in the county. Um, People Inc. is on board, fully on board with that to help us out with that application process and making the case to get that back. Um, later on, it may require some type of resolution from the board and the Board of Supervisors as well to say, you know, supporting some type of lobbying to bring back the dollars. We have the numbers. We're for sure of that. So, and we also want to provide interventions for underserved families with children under five. Um, increase performance on school readiness indicators at K enrollment. We measure that very closely, the VKRP. Our new system will track even more depth to that. Um, so that's an indicator we're going to use through this grant program too, to help our, our early childhood care providers bring that level up. And also provide case coordination for families in need. That's a very exciting one. That, that was the main concern we had with, you know, whether or not just to pull kids into another pre-K class. Well, here's those other services that are integral to a program like this. It can't just be simple educational services. It's all the wraparound that comes with that. Um, and the case coordination and the parenting, nurturing parenting classes and, and things like that. So that's a part of it. Um, and leverage community resources around that common vision. Again, that early childhood is so important. We, we heard the outcry from the community right away and they came to the table. The Board of Supervisors came in to support. Um, and it's just great. It's, it seems like we have already the common idea that this is important. So just seeing what that looks like and map that out for the program. Um, where will this project take place? Um, CCLC and RCPS right now, because we're the qualified providers for those at-risk children with the Virginia quality standards level that we need. But um, we do want to get other childcare education providers to increase their Virginia quality standard to the level so that they are able to do that too. And at which point, through that application process, parents will have choice in the placement of their, their children and approved vendors um, for our program. Um, so we plan to continue our local pre-K class. Um, and CCLC will continue to be primary placement at first for the um, First Step Program ages three and four. And hopefully when we get the early Head Start, which is, would be a brand-new application process because we haven't had that funding before. So we think we'll be competitive there for that. And there shouldn't be an issue with receiving that. Then that would be your, your birth to two continuum. So there's your continuum of services, hopefully. Um, but that's the plan. Alright, so it's done. Seventy-five pages in about three weeks with some incredible people. Um, the, a couple of board members from CCLC. Um, we had Carol Lucky, who's an incredible social work person. Oh my goodness. Uh, so we Google Doc this thing to death. I made that a verb. Um, because it certainly was in this sense. This was a kinesthetic process. Um, but it's done and we, we pushed the button on Friday. So it's in. So we, we think we'll, we made the case pretty well. Um, and so many organizations came on board to partner with us to say we, we are very concerned with our, our early childhood education in this county. So we'll keep you posted.
What, what do you perceive to be the number, the base number per year up here with young blood?
Um, well, right now we just had number twenty-four coming in.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four in First Step this year. Uh, so that's what we have now.
I need it, that's twenty-four.
Not in our pre-K. That's the separate First Step program.
Okay, but the, but twenty-four. To, um, fully qualified?
Yes. Yes.
And at one time it was six or something.
Right. And I, I think a big piece of that was the in-county outreach that would be happening through outside organizations. If we are all working on it and leveraging together our, our outreach, that's already shown great benefit um, that we haven't tried before. So, yes.
And our pre-K class, will staff that the same way we have in the past? The way you envision it?
Yes.
Um, a mixture of, of qualified or we're gonna go um, economically. It's not a first-come, first-served.
No, it doesn't work like that. No. It's a sliding scale rubric, need-first, yes. And there's different at-risk factors that you identify that are directly tied to um, school readiness. Um, but the unified process will do that for both programs. So yes, they'll funnel in the neediest first. So we'll, we'll always make sure we get them first.
But if we have, I guess if we have space for every kid, then it's a, a good qualified or not qualified. Then it's a good mixture of youngsters with different economic backgrounds.
Absolutely.
I'm a real believer in that you have to have a mixture of, of economic backgrounds to make it a viable program. And I, I think we want to maintain that thought process.
That's what we like about this because we don't just use poverty. We do, Head Start does. But our program uses all the at-risk and local at-risk factors. And there, there will probably be more that are identified through this needs assessment that's being done. And those are directly related to our demographics and our indicators for student readiness.
But even providing a program for kids who are not at risk
Yeah.
allows to, to provide models, if you want to say that, provide models to, to all of the program.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're not turning anyone away from it.
Okay, alright.
For application. No, that would still be the same, yeah.
So all four-year-olds would have an op, will have an opportunity to be involved in a program. Pretty much.
To, to apply or which?
To apply. I can't say that they necessarily will, but we've expanded our slot capacity by partnering too. So in essence, we, we think so based on our numbers. But yeah, I mean, we.
I mean, if we get every four-year-old in the county involved in an educational program.
That's awesome. That's what.
I mean, that, that makes sense to me from, from an attri- I mean, that makes sense to me, from an attrition point of view.
Absolutely.
We would continue, they go from four to five.
Absolutely.
And right now, we're four to five.
Yes, absolutely, you're absolutely right, and that's our, that's our main goal too, is making sure everybody can get into a program and have access to not just the educational resources, but the family resources that they need too.
And your list of partners seems to tap into different, sort of different little demographics or subsets and maybe social groups, really.
Yes, the Lions Club is the old people.
Yeah, that's important to have the old people.
They are, you did have hearing screenings, that's awesome.
Yeah, but all those, the different schools, I've never seen all those, all those schools together, so, it's good.
Exciting.
It is exciting, a lot of work.
Oh, yes. So exciting, it was so worth it in this company, even if it doesn't, it was worth it, because we created some partnerships and and we've gotten people around the table that probably never would have been before, so.
They don't pay dividends at all, right?
Absolutely.
It should.
That's what we hope.
And they could fund it fully or partially funded or anything?
No, it's, it's, that's the grant, two hundred and fifty thousand, they will make six awards for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, so it's either all.
And we can only get one?
One.
Right now. We already have some on the radar, we're going after next, so.
No, I mean, they couldn't double up.
Oh, I know, but that's that, he's like, maybe I could.
And we'll know before the next board meeting happens, probably.
They said December, so I don't know what part of December, but December twenty.
Thirty-first.
It could be, but soon, we will know soon, so right in time for budget.
I think the likes grants come in in December also.
Yes, we're hoping, ten dollars. Okay, so if there's no other questions?
It's exciting.
Budget calendar, so speaking of that, we have your draft budget calendar here for your proposal.
I have a question.
Okay.
January eighth, what day is that?
I can find out real quick.
Tuesday.
Somebody wants.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. It's the second Tuesday of January.
Yep.
Second Tuesday?
Second Tuesday of January.
I may have a conflict, but I might not.
So you're at the beach, are you?
I might have to give them a trip to Hawaii. That I'm not paying for, so I'm thinking.
We should have our board meeting there.
You can just Skype it.
But I might be back, but. Or I just won't go.
This is the draft that we just pretty much boilerplate, just fixed the dates to what it would be this year. We've shared it with Mr. Curry to share with his board, as he's developing the county budget calendar as well, so hopefully it'll coordinate pretty nicely.
Regarding the, so regarding this joint, I mean, we, I don't remember when it was that we started doing that.
Nineteen twelve.
But, no. I, too, it's within my, my history. So I'm wondering how effective that really is, and it's fallen apart a couple of times because of whatever, you know, various reasons. But is it truly, I can't remember what it was we were trying to accomplish by calling a joint board meeting. It's confusing too, by the way, because, you know, you have two boards there, both have to call themselves into order. Somebody has to moderate the entire thing, you know, it's a, and what's the benefit? What was the goal? The goal was, we all get the same information at the same time and we're vetting the same questions, right, around the table.
Except that the week before, it's given to the public, the same information. Why not invite the board to that one?
Why invite them at all if it's not necessary?
Well, they should know what your budget looks like, streamline the process, send it over.
That, that, well, we do send them a copy, right, they all have, they all have a copy. Really, we were trying to create a forum where if they had questions.
Questions, they could.
They could get answers from people that are, that know the answers to the questions, right? That was the objective, and, and. Anyway, I guess what I'm questioning is, is why have all of us sitting on a stage, shoulder to shoulder? And do we, are we accomplishing anything? I don't think we are, I think what I've noticed is a couple of supervisors asking direct questions to Dr. Grimsley or our finance CFO, that's how things roll, right? And then if we have any questions, I mean, rarely do we have a question by that point, we're done, right? So we're mostly done. So I'm wondering why it is we're, you know, it's hard to stop something once you start it, maybe that's why we keep doing it? But do we really need to do it and do we need to call it? Before we vote on a calendar that has it on there, which makes it happen, we should.
Makes it have to happen.
Maybe if you, you and Gary could talk and say, do we really need this, or don't we really just want a forum that educates everyone prior to the public hearing of the supervisor? So the supervisors have their hearing after hours, and really, before that happens, they need a Q and A time. An official, we might as well answer it in public, Q and A.
Maybe the, the answer would be a work session, which is less formal.
Yeah, anytime you get both boards together, it's kind of a, it's a.
The superintendent could just go to their meeting and answer their questions.
Which I do every month.
Which you do anyway, right? But it's not like, it's not that, at that meeting, it's not their focus, and.
Is it required for you to present to the Board of Supervisors in some sort of?
I don't, I don't.
A joint meeting's not a requirement.
Okay.
I think that was what you're saying, it's just a.
I think we started it with the, and it was.
Not necessarily.
It was just an offering to try to say, hey, let's get educated about what we're proposing and provide a forum for that. So I'm saying we should still try to do that, but a joint meeting is.
Comfortable.
Yes.
It was canceled due to snow this year, wasn't it?
Last year it was, yeah.
This, you know, for this. Two twenty.
Well.
Big good year to.
And we didn't get hurt.
Nobody, yeah, nobody missed it.
Nobody cried.
Nobody cried, yeah.
It's always a work in cumbersome.
Now, the problem.
For us, to us to approve it, send it over to them, any issues, any questions, kick it back, and then we finalize it.
Yeah, the problem is, when we're having our public hearing, things aren't finalized to the point where they're ready to ask a question, because something might not be permanent, yet, or as far as the board's concerned, it's not permanent. So it needs to lay, it needs to be further in history, but really, a forum that entertains, they've had time to review the document, they have some questions. That's it, so.
So you're saying just a meeting to the Board of Supervisors?
I think just a meeting.
How about a different format?
To them, where we're all present.
Right.
But, I mean, it's a joint meeting, but we don't all.
And then after works this, we've approved the budget.
That's usually what happens, after that meeting, we go to a separate room, do our final work session and approve our final budget. That we, then it's no longer the working documents. That is across the fence, so.
Better if it's out.
Joint meeting, yeah, just.
Is there a different term you'd like to use for the presentation?
I just think it's awkward to have all of them on the stage, it's not effective, but if we all show up.
What if we had a different format?
I know.
What if, what if the format were Mr. Curry, Dr. Grimsley, Mr. Welch, and you? And you all sat down over a cup of coffee and figured this thing out?
Now, we did try that once. We did try that once, I think that was a really bad idea.
We have no law.
Because there was all of these.
Yeah, but that was a lot of years ago.
Oh, well, there was all this secret meetings, conversation, I'm like, what's a secret meeting?
No.
Anyway. Deals were being made that weren't being made, it was horrible, anyway. So what, so can you and Gary talk about options for this? So it could be a joint meeting, but what if it was just the supervisors have an opportunity to ask questions and we happen to be there?
Yeah, we could agree to go to a meeting.
We're just there.
The supervisor.
Uh, that won't work, we can't be there.
Oh, we can't all be there, oh, that's true.
We can sit separately.
You can be.
We can sit in different places.
The supervisors have shown up to our meetings and sat in our audience.
Just you and us can't sit together and chit chat while there's going on.
You can't conduct any business.
And we can't conduct any business.
So we can all be there and have conversations about what we meant, what the priorities are, but.
How important are we to the joint meeting anyways? It's two supervisors asking questions.
See, that's what I noticed, we are basically. Well, we're listening, we're still listening, which I can do from the audience, and it's a more fluid thing. I'm not going to be able to help.
Well, then maybe they need to call a meeting, they need to call a meeting and invite us to be in the audience, is that what you're saying?
Well, we're invited to every meeting, so I would think, the thing, we've talked to Gary, see if you can get the supervisors to put on their calendar a budget review, right? A preliminary budget review.
Of the school.
Which is open to the public, it's not the hearing, it's open to the public, but it's a time where we know that's the topic. Do you have any questions about this thing that we just handed to you that's our first draft, right?
Well, maybe it's something Mr. Curry might want to put on the agenda at one of their regular.
Yeah, you can do that, but if they do it at two o'clock, then you're.
It could be at their second clock.
We're missing, yeah, we're missing of people's awareness, so, yeah, we need to try to recommend it as a evening when parents are available. Conversation.
All right, well, we will talk.
And the goal is not the hearing piece, it's the education of what's in the document, right?
Yes, right.
So what are you talking about, so we scratch this, we'll scratch this thing.
We'll table it.
Well, we have to vote on the calendar?
No.
We can vote on it next month?
Okay.
Just wait.
I mean, if you want to firm up the rest of the dates, if that's okay, then I can tell Mr. Curry that he can go forward and bring his board that calendar with at least those dates, and then we can talk about the joint.
That's fine.
Would that be okay?
That's fine.
So going up to.
So we'll amend the calendar then, when we get to action items to take off.
To take off the joint meeting for the time being.
Sure.
And everything else will stand, is that all right?
That would be great.
So an amended calendar. Great. Now, that was painful, but it's going to be less painful than if we'd done nothing, how about that?
All right, just really quickly, policy updates, I don't have a slew of them for you this time, but I did want to talk to you just really quickly about our policy review procedures, because sometimes there's policies that do come through that need to be enacted pretty quickly. And sometimes that thirty-day review period is a little bit too long, because we need to enact that policy to be effective. So I was wondering if there was a way that we could call.
Where's the policy come from?
V S B A. And it, it's usually from Virginia code or a law that's been passed, that's coming down the pike, but we don't adopt it until V S B A sends us.
So it could be, it could be sixty days before something's enacted, so that's what, that's what you're talking about.
Yes, and it can create situations for us that, you know, put us at odds with certain things. So we were wondering if there was a way that, you used to have a policy committee, I'm not saying have another committee, but if we could call two board members to review a certain policy that we need to enact, if that were to come up and not have the thirty-day review, so that, that could come up, then those two board members could then, you know, try to vet everything about it and ask questions about it, and then at the board meeting, we could actually put that on as an action item. Because currently, we bring them all to you, and then it's another thirty-day window to review everything, and then we.
So what would happen is, that policy committee would show up at the board meeting, say, we reviewed this thing and recommend it's passing tonight.
Exactly, exactly.
So we would have to, a standing committee would be required, otherwise, we'd have to have a meeting to call and put a committee together. Right? So.
Yeah, the standing committee only means on a need basis.
Yeah, on a needed basis, right, and it may not be at all, but it's available.
And just for, I don't have any now, it may come up, and it's not as an action item or anything right now, I just wanted to get your input on that.
That's a fine idea.
Yeah, which makes sense.
So we can add that to the things that we take care of in January?
That would be great, yes.
So think about whether you're willing to serve on that, or now. It's a great committee, you may never get called.
That's the kind to be on.
That's the kind I like to work on. All right, and that concludes the reports of the superintendents, thank you.
Reports of headwaters representative.
Okay, and headwaters met on, on October fifteenth, and the notable thing was that Dr. Grimsley described the possible stream lab and brought in some examples of robots that were little nice hands-on things. And the school, as Shannon mentioned before, has applied for a likes grant for some materials for that lab. And then the after-school program has over thirty students enrolled in it, for our place, I saw them the other day, so that's all I've got.
That's great. And V G S?
We didn't meet, but we will meet on the sixth of December.
All right, is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the board? Anne, I know you got, you run out of words.
I could tell a really nice story, seriously.
We love stories, Anne.
So.
Within thirty minutes.
You know.
Yeah, you got a three-minute story.
It'll be less than three minutes, we, you know, those of us to get together and talk about what's working in your program, what's working in your program, that kind of stuff. So some schools do in-house, in-school banking, that is a banking representative, or sometimes this community organization will come on a given day, the kids fill out deposit slips, they bring their dollar, whatever it is. So this, they were doing this at the school, and the kids during the thing, and this kid got up to the front and he said, "My mom forgot to give me money to deposit." And he said, "But I found a nickel in my pocket." So his nickel was deposited, and he's going to get a match. So what do you think that means for that kid? He's going to remember that.
It's a lesson, yeah, it's a lesson, yeah, it's a good story.
It's true, too.
Cool, anyone else? Kevin, I know you're the only one in the anyone else category tonight, that's my thing, yeah, all right.
You don't have a story to compete with?
No, I gotta try.
All right, moving on to action items, approval of the budget calendar is modified this evening during our discussion, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion, Ms. Byham, second from Mr. Grove, is there any other discussion? Everybody understands the mod, right? And you're going to talk to, yep. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed, no? And so we're, is there any new business? I have one thing, I want to make public aware that four out of the five of us are going to be together traveling to the school board conference on Thursday of this week. And we're allowed to do such things because it's a retreat nature, I call that conference a retreat nature. But typically, you would not find more than two of us in any one place at the same time, without some kind of. So we'll be spending the day in Williamsburg and traveling back the same day, it's a really long day. And we're going to need to start, because they're calling for bad weather.
Yeah, that's, I saw that.
So we're going to need to start really early. How early?
Early, early.
Hmm? Ooh, I was thinking five. Okay, so, so this is going to happen, I'm going to.
It's raining, it's raining.
I'm going to pick up, I'm going to pick up.
No, no, four o'clock, it's supposed to be ice.
So I'm going to.
Well, then that's even better for five or five-thirty.
Then maybe wait till.
Five-thirty, five-thirty gives us three hours to get there before it starts. It's two in the car drive.
I think be at my house by five-thirty.
Yeah, you better leave three.
So I'm going to pick, I'm going to pick up the van, I'm going to go to Pudd's house, but I'm going to be there at?
Five fifteen?
Five, between five oh five and five-ten. I'll be at your house at five fifteen and your house at five-twenty, and then we'll be on the road, are we good? That's our plan.
Do we have an approximate return time yet?
Usually we leave there about three-thirty or four.
Four, we're usually held by seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty, right, okay.
Right?
I think that's right.
So by AM.
Do we stop for dinner?
Maybe we should stop for dinner.
One year we did, one year.
I think we grabbed something.
It would be nice then, because I don't, getting up at the time in the morning and then having to go home and cook dinner is not what I'm looking forward to.
Then we'll stop for dinner, just for you, or I'll, you can come to my house.
December, thanks, is there anything else? December eleventh is the next scheduled board meeting, and. And now a motion to...
I move the board convene to a closed session following purpose discussing the center of the appointment of staff members for a coaching position, a professional position, a classified position, resignation of a coaching position, and dismissal of a classified position pursuant to Code Section 2.23711A1.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ruben. All in favor, aye?
Aye.